Meeting called to order. Review and approve minutes from the April 19th meeting, February 20th.
Yeah, April.
Because I messed it up last time. So now she puts it on here so I can get it right this time. April 19th meeting, we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Okay.
Second that.
All right. Discussion.
Everybody good?
We're good. Okay. All in favor of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, adjustments to agenda. Carl Bayer, Energy Committee, Groton. We need to adopt a zoning ordinance. Animal control officer assistance at hourly wage. So those are adjustments that we need to, I don't know when we're dealing with what.
I think we go straight through with it. That sound good to you?
Yep, sounds good to me. So Energy Committee, Groton.
Hi, thanks for having us.
Yeah, it's good.
Carl Bayer.
Michael Lawler.
Hi, Mike.
So we wanted you to be aware of what we've been doing the last few years.
Okay.
And we do some things with Groton like recycling and transfer station and half the supply and the school. So we feel free link those ways. So I just want to go with you, just the history of things that we have done. I don't know what you've done, but just let you know what you've done and see if there's things that you want to join us with.
Okay.
Talk to us about, okay? So I'll just tell you what we've done since 2018. We took the NVDA sponsored energy efficiency assessment from Uplia Construction. I don't know if you got that in 2010. We got one and so we began working on the building. And then in 2018, when we started the Energy Committee, we had it reviewed by Efficiency Vermont and we continued to work on the building.
Okay.
To update the year report. We partnered with Efficiency Vermont and the Heat Squad, which does the, which does the energy audits of residents.
Yep.
Provide information and rebates for energy efficient products and weather station programs. So we set up an information boost after some fair, it went to carnival, town meeting, and in the transfer station. I don't know if you see, not all the time, but occasionally we do it at the transfer station. We have many, we, we got a energy budget for the town building, actually line item for upgrading energy in the building. The town audit is not complete yet, but we have the money and the plans to do that. We put a solar array on the town garage and that provides enough electric energy for all of the town, the six town buildings, not including East Riley Village.
Okay.
For the other town buildings. And that comes from that array on the, on the garage. We voted, the town voted $50,000 for a renewable energy geothermal system for the fire station and the, and the garage.
Okay.
Is this Rite Gate you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just taking notes.
I have your, a list.
Okay.
Make it easy for you.
Yeah, perfect.
We are now before MRR, the Municipal Energy Resource Program, to try to get more money from them. We don't, we have enough money actually for Peloton, we went that way.
Okay.
But we're trying to get a geothermal, trying to get more support from that new program at the Building and Service Administration, if you're aware of it.
Okay. Now, to do what you've done, that's all been through grants and stuff or the towns paid?
The town, like in terms of vote, so far, yeah, the town voted for the, a town meeting for the money for the array.
Okay.
Town votes for the budget.
Okay.
And another thing, we, we do window dressers, which I've gone to, and the town would vote a small donation for people who don't have money to pay for the window inserts that we do. Now, we do that with the window dresser program with Varnett. We're small.
Right, 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 right.
We went with Varnett, Peachum, and Dambal, the four towns together. We did 277 inserts last year and 25% of those are handled through no pay.
Okay.
We don't want anybody left out. Rite Gate gave $500, I think Peachum gave $500, we got a $3,000 grant to the Dambal people.
Okay.
They got one. Yeah, that's how we handle the people who are not, who don't pay on the, that's window dressers. And we're going to do that again this year. And we've already signed people up.
I don't know, what's a window dresser?
Talk about window dresser.
This is the interior storm window.
Okay.
It's custom made so that it squeezes into the existing window.
Okay.
So people can put those in and they'll stop the drafts and
I see.
Save on fuel, that sort of thing. So it's kind of like a, like a quilting party or bar raising.
Okay.
Where you have the bar industry.
Okay.
In, in Varnett that is donated to us for a week. And what we do is set up shifts, four hour shifts, twice a day for those, for that whole week. And we get, up to last year, we had up to about 150 shifts. So these people come in, maybe 10, 12 at a time, and actually build these things. The frames are made and made and we put together the plastic that goes over them, put the foam around the edges.
I see.
Stack them all together and then
So it's kind of like, the same idea as taking, heat shrinking your window type deal, it's just, you just?
This is a bit more permanent because you can take them out in the summer.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Or if you've got air conditioning, you know, or whatever, if you, you know, if it's an area of the house that is not used all the time, if you don't need ventilation.
Okay.
Leave it up all year round.
Okay.
That's window dressers. And some people, by the way, from Groton have already signed up to get window dressers.
Okay.
And they'll, what, what we do in the town is not handling it with us. They have to be on the back burner for the Rite Gate one that, you know, we can only do about 275 a year. And this has been going on for five or six years in Vermont. It's not, we're not the first. There are, how many towns down the lane?
Well, they're all over New England at this point.
Yeah.
But they're made in Maine. And we've got, you know, obviously dozens of towns here in Vermont that have been doing it, some of them for many years, and it'll be our second year.
Okay.
So back to the, yeah, the town did vote $50,000 towards this energy thing at the fire station and garage and window dresser program. We, we started Blue Mountain community, so for residents who, who rent, who don't want to spend a lot of money on their own, face the wrong direction or for whatever reason, they get by by the kilowatt. So we started a Blue Mountain municipal project.
Okay.
Located a place in town for it. We have a list of 23 people, residents in the area, which includes some people from Groton that are interested.
Okay.
And being able to get in on this company. It's the cheapest way, they get electricity and some of that with a member subscriber program. So we're promoting that.
So if you buy into a, I don't, so you're actually buying solar panels, but they're not on their property, they're there per se or?
No.
How do you, okay.
It's 100, this has been done in Peachum, I don't know if you've heard about the Peachum project that's been being installed this summer.
Not really, but.
So Peachum's effort's done it. It's 150 kilowatt array, it can help you, it's a half acre.
Okay.
Approximately half acre and it's net metered.
Okay.
And so the, the credits go to all the homes that sign up by the amount that they've signed up for.
Okay.
You want to say anything more about that, Michael?
Yeah, we're hoping that we can get enough subscribers. We want to have 40 or 50 altogether. We're still looking for the ideal location for where to put the array. We want to put it somewhere that it's not going to really be seen, not going to be blocking anybody's view or anything like that. At the same time, it has to be relatively close to a pole, you know, so we don't have to run wires and holes and things like that. So I think it, we'd like to get a, we have a Rite Gate at this point, but if we can't find an ideal location in Rite Gate, then we're going to spread out a little bit further because it's going to benefit this whole area.
Right.
Anybody that's got Green Mountain Power can become a shareholder in this.
Okay.
And they can buy, you know, as much electricity as they need for their house.
Okay. Which I think that's good, you know, solar and whatever. I do have one question on the solar, just out of curiosity. So the solar panels and these things, how many years are they good for?
Nobody knows at this point.
And then what, what happens when they're not good anymore?
It's only been 45 years since the first one was sold and they're still going strong.
I know, I'm just like, well, so, okay, so when they're not good anymore, then what do you do?
The manufacturer, let me just say, the manufacturer will give you 25 years.
Okay.
So if I, at the end of 25 years, they estimate that they'll go down maybe as much as 20% in terms of their, their capacity to generate electricity. So many of these arrays will just leave them up and just let them generate electricity for another however long.
Okay.
But who knows, the technology in 25 years might be so much better that it's worthwhile to
So that we can recycle the old ones?
And you can recycle them now in virtually every state because they're made out of glass and copper and, you know, things of that nature. They've already figured out how to do that.
I'd like to make a comment.
And I'd also like to say that you can bring them over to my house. And I'll give them anything for free.
Yeah, being at the transfer, I'm the volunteer coordinator at the transfer station. So I see all the stuff that we generate every, every week.
Right.
We generate a lot of stuff. I did look, yeah, I mean, EPA does have a rating policy on how we're supposed to disperse of the panels. And 75% of it is glass and metal.
Yeah.
And it developed, the waivers and stuff like that, they've developed the process, developing processes to break those down. So at least as we go into solar, I think we have a little bit more attention as a society to
Matt, I hope so.
Future that you're talking about. In terms of the, the, these arrays that have been set up for 25 years, they can go longer. But in our case, the leaseholder has to agree, otherwise they need be taken down. And part of the project is having money to take them down and put and seal it back to where it was. So 25 years, you have longer? Yes, if the subscribers still want to keep it going and replace panels that get too old.
Okay.
I don't want to get too much into it, but
It'll be an actual account, the, the Achilles' funds during that 25 year period. So if the landlord doesn't want it anymore, then they have the funds to take it all down.
Okay. So what, we wouldn't have anything to do with that part of it as far as that's, that's between the community members and whatever would?
Although, you can tell them about off taker, you can tell them about the situation.
Yeah, we're still, we're also still haven't decided on what we call an off taker. So 15% of all the electricity that is generated is going to go to what we call an off taker. So if you have a big electric bill, like if, for instance, the town might have X number of kilowatts that they use each month. So what that would do then for the town is for every dollars worth of electricity that you owe, you'd only have to pay 90 cents. In other words, we would give you 15% of the electricity and you'd give us 90% of that back. I don't know if that makes, makes sense.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how they do the math on that, it doesn't sound like that works.
Well, just think of this 10 cent, or 10% discount on your energy.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, okay.
So it's a good deal and everybody in the town obviously benefits if the town is, is saving money on their electricity.
Okay, okay.
Another thing that we've done is we partnered with the atmospheric department and we put them in touch with the school in Blue Mountain, if they want some help supplementing their climate change curriculum, which they already have, of course, but the, the, the atmospheric science department is very big on education about climate change. So they're in touch now with the school and I don't know what's happening, but it's between the school and BU about that. Just things that we've tried to do to promote information and knowledge about climate change. We also produce a monthly newsletter and you'll see some short pieces of it in the forum. In our case, the Rite Gate listserv and the Rite Gate homepage, if you don't see what we, about our programs and information and encouraging people to get their houses audited, get them weatherized as best you can as an individual to, to upgrade your weatherization and useless fossil fuel. So that's what we're doing, just wanted you to know.
Okay. So what do you guys?
Do, obviously you represent Rite Gate, are there other towns in Donakis Kingdom that have energy committees that are working on these, these type of projects for their?
Yes.
For them?
You can tell them about the regional meetings.
We have a regional meeting at this point, which we started, which is Caladonia County primarily. And we get 13 or 14 towns for, we have that meeting and discuss, you know, best practices. We bring in various different speakers, you know, state representatives, that sort of thing, to tell us what their positions are and, you know, try to get informed on the money that's available with grants, things of that nature. So we'd like to encourage Groton, you don't have an energy committee.
So to start, try to put together an energy committee that would work with you guys and other energy committees and?
So, yeah, what's it, I think, did you just volunteer?
What?
The umpire, right?
No, I mean, I think it would be, I think a first step for us would be identifying individuals that would be willing to participate in, especially in, I think at least initially in representing Groton or attending the regional meetings to kind of get a feel for what is going on, you know, and then from there, I think, decide if we want to form an actual energy committee. Again, part of that's just, you know, having the people that we want to have available.
Community club.
I'll let you pitch that.
So, so it's pretty much the same thing as everything, it's hard to find people that want to get involved in almost anything, so?
Well, ours is a volunteer committee. There are 10 very active people, other advisors, and we, we're a subcommittee of the planning commission, in our case. Because what we do actually fulfills a lot of what the planning committee, the town plan says from 2018, which is bigger than you now. So you don't have to subcommittee, but we chose to do that. The planning commission knows what we're doing. They can, they can also advise. Two members of the planning commission are actually on the volunteer subcommittee.
Okay.
So that's how we function. Other towns function different ways.
So I guess the other question that comes to mind is where are we within our town plan?
I mean, we do have the chair of the planning commission and we might be able to answer that later, but we're supposed to be put on the spot right now.
Yeah. We're transitioning to looking at our town plan and we're kind of looking at things to focus on in the town plan that maybe we can accomplish in the short term before we actually update it. If it's updated, I think by, needs to be updated by 2025, so I figure we'll have to have a draft together by sometime late next year.
So, and, you know, I, I think that, in my mind, it puts us in a position where we should be looking at as a town, you know, surveying, what do we feel as a town we should be focusing on with our, our town plan? And, and maybe, maybe having an energy committee or a, a group of, of folks as a subcommittee of the planning commission are looking at those details, but, you know, I, it sounds like there is some want from people that are coming through the recycling center to, to have some discussions around energy planning for the town of Groton. So maybe that's, again, just kind of thinking through, you know, what are we doing with the planning commission should, you know, because we're, it seems like we're at the beginning stages of, you know, looking at reviewing, revising, updating our town plan, that that gets incorporated in there as part of that. I don't know.
No, I mean, I think that probably you guys are going to do what you got to do.
Yeah.
But I guess, yeah, I mean, I think
Let you lay it out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, recommendation, a suggestion from the select board after this meeting would be to look at the energy aspect of the town plan. See where that sits.
Great.
Go ahead, Dan.
I have a question. What's the initial buy-in for a resident to buy into this solar panel project?
It's about $2,950 per kilowatt.
Per kilowatt. And what's the payback time on that?
We're guessing about 12 years.
It depends on whether or not the person uses the, uses the tax write-off, the 30% tax write-off. Most people do, but not everybody can. That's like, that's like a 30% rebate from the feds on your, on taxes. So the cost depends upon using the tax liability or not. And then simple modeling, right? So that doesn't assume freezing inflation, right?
Or, or Mount Vesuvius for that matter.
So Mike, I guess, see, you want to get something to say?
I have a question for that.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess if it was up to me, I would, I'd bring that before the planning commission and see maybe if that's something, I know you guys are working on the town plan, but just see if there's bandwidth enough, if a subcommittee, an energy subcommittee is got me eyeing on it.
It sounds like Pena or something.
But, I mean, as far as the select board's concerned, I mean, I think that's our first step, you know, is to go to the planning commission and see.
We could even look into it as a planning commission and then sort of, you know?
Discuss them all yourselves, see if there's, maybe someone knows someone who's real interested in this.
Yeah, I mean, there's a very good possibility for sure that there are people that would be really interested.
I mean, I, I personally am interested in the topic.
Yeah.
Ali Lechter sent me another invite today to invite me to the meeting and Jock Gil and Peachum's been bringing this up for a couple of years and I, I just don't feel like I got the capacity to take a lead right now, but I'm willing to participate and I've got a little bit of sort of firsthand experience doing some of this stuff.
If you've got enough motivation to find somebody to put in the lead, Mike, that would be.
Well, and, you know, and I think, I think too, like, you know, just me thinking a little bit more broadly is, you know, the state of Vermont's already made commitments to, you know, fossil fuel reductions in the, in the next decade, less than a decade now. You know, there are, there are a lot of pieces that, that are part of that. And I think the only way that some of those goals are going to ever be met is if towns start to look at this stuff and find ways to implement this within their
Or it's going to come down like a hammer and you're
Exactly. So it's, it's, it's one of those things, it's for us to be proactive about, and especially if our, you know, if our town plans, you know, before reviewing that and updating that, do we incorporate some of those type of, you know, goals for the town and how the town can affect that into that town plan, you know, kind of cement it a little bit there because then when the state does get to the point where they're like, we're really tight on this timeline, what are you doing? We're already ahead of that power curve to a certain extent.
Yeah, I think we're in a much more fortunate position having Rite Gate, Peachum being two, three, four, five years ahead.
Yeah.
Some of this stuff. In terms of learning things.
Absolutely.
Adopting it.
And anything that we can do in terms of mentoring and new people coming to our meetings to see how things go, regional meetings, there is some expertise.
In order for, for us to begin to meet some of these standards, state of Vermont first has to relax a lot of its obstructions of things like hydro power, wind power on mountains. If you want to get to this zero carbon footprint that they're talking about, they're going to have to relax the restrictions they have.
So, well, and I would say, the, the other thing that I would say, say about that, Dan, is, you know, yes, there are some, there are some specifications, regulations that are not necessarily conducive to meeting that. I think one of the big legs up that we have, that we can use to our advantage is, you know, we have a very large portion of our town that is still forested. We are tracking our active use for, for town properties or for, for, you know, residential properties within the town and private property. But, you know, we can somewhat take advantage of, of what the state's doing in the state park, especially because that's a big part of our footprint. So, you know, we can start, we, we sort of have a leg up there anyway when you talk about, especially the, you know, especially carbon, you know, carbon, what is it now?
It's a question.
Yeah, it's a question, you know, we kind of are in that. We're in a good place there really as a town.
So, so what we're going to do is we're going to continue to talk about this. We'll put it on our agenda and we'll kind of check into it and see if we can do something. But we appreciate, appreciate you guys taking the time to come and talk about what's
You guys have got handouts that you want, we can set up in the foyer at the town office and if that's something that you guys raise, well, we appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope it was worth the trip, Carl.
I knew you'd probably, I mean, I have a lot of people in Groton, well, you still an energy committee, they say, oh, I don't know.
So, so I guess we need to adopt the zoning ordinance.
Please.
Officially, which I thought we did all this, but we apparently, now we're to the final step. So we just need a motion to adopt.
Adopt it.
So I'm making a motion to adopt the zoning ordinances as
The new zoning ordinance.
Okay, adopt the new zoning ordinances as
amended?
amended.
Effective immediately.
Yes.
Okay.
Effective May 3rd, 2023.
Retroactive to when we signed it? Oh, it's like three years?
You seconded it?
No, I seconded it. All right, any discussion?
No.
I, again, I think the only thing to say is that the, the planning commission and, and Dan and, and Mike Namies and a lot of folks have put a lot of hard work into it.
Yes.
And these are, we've already seen them, we, we really like them. It really is going to be a step forward for Groton, you know, and, and that's really, really
I, I had, February 1st, you guys approved
We did.
The zoning bylaws and then we had held a special meeting on March 1st, but the words never really got said.
I don't think.
You never really adopted them.
Well, it's, you know, that's
Okay.
What the motion should be is a motion to adopt the
Right.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
All right.
We can take it off. We've got three different versions on it.
Okay, all right.
We can put the new one up.
This is going to help me, believe it or not. A lot.
Good. The other thing that we needed to The other thing, well, we just needed to talk about is, is our animal control officer assistant set hourly wage. We needed to talk about what we, and we briefly talked about this.
Yeah, I'm good with, with what we're doing for consulting on the planning commission, I'm good with that.
That's going to ask, is that rate on, all rate rate?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that rate?
I think it's 1683, something like that.
But it's such a, it's a small, I mean, it's a thing, so why wouldn't it be $20 an hour to do?
As long as I'm here, I'm good with that. If somebody else says, can we do it, then you can adjust it to whatever you want, but I'm good with that.
Okay.
You guys treat in care, so I'm, I'm good with that.
I say we just follow that same rate?
So we're going to make it 17, whatever it is, 17, 64?
I don't even know what it is.
It was 1683, I think is what it gets now.
1683.
Whatever, I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's what it is.
Whatever the rate is, it comes out.
Mine, yeah.
Okay.
No, I think that makes sense.
We own, we own three hours, so.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
Yep, and it's like, like anything, Dan, just log your hours when you get
Yeah, he did. Okay, so make a motion, make it all official.
Okay. Move to pay
Pay the
Animal control assistant.
The same rate as the zoning administrator.
Consulting rates.
Yeah, there you go.
Something along those lines.
Yeah, whatever.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who seconded it? Aaron? Who seconded it? Aaron?
Sure.
Easy peasy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good.
See it from a distance.
We're over that. Highway updates, uh, we got an email from Harold, which I think you guys saw. And we need to, uh, add him to add the.
Paving bits.
Yes, bid openings for paving to next meeting. Uh, he got grant money for the.
Boulder Beach Road.
Yes.
Yep. The whole thing it sounded like.
To where they left off is what he said, so I don't know what that means.
Okay.
So we'll have to see what that means, but that's good.
Yep, it is good.
So that's good. And what was the other thing he had?
Ordering permits, maybe?
Ordering permits. I couldn't read, read the email, but anyways, I didn't. Other than that, everything's going good, he said. I couldn't open the email. I don't know why it won't open.
So. Have we heard anything from him on the powder spring culvert?
We haven't.
Was that?
No.
When, when is that moving forward?
I don't know.
That got good on the, uh, the box culvert was like.
They were right on the box culvert.
Like an eight month wait, waiting time or something on that.
So I don't know. I haven't had any update.
We should just double check that.
Okay, we can check in with Harold on that.
Box culvert project.
Good. Treasurer?
Okay, um, I gave out budgets. Everybody has it. I think it's thirty-three percent. So we can review it. You guys have it and you can review and discuss next meeting if you want. Our new town auditors were, were scheduled to be in the office yesterday and today, but they came yesterday and they did not need to come today because everything went so well. Very pleased with these new auditors. We were quite nervous because don't know them, but each of them were super and.
And he came over two.
Three.
Three.
Three. Um, they spent, they were here all day and, um, went through it all. So I think they might reach out to you individually by phone because they never scheduled the time. So, and I said, you're all working folks and so they may call you. So I'll let you know if they do and I'll provide them with your phone number. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Yep.
And dental insurance, that is due to renew in July of 2023. That's when it was set up. And it's the third year in a row that the rates are not changing. So that's fabulous.
It's gonna be the only thing.
I know. It's really good. All right, you set the Dan Webster wage. Town policies, we can talk about the end and I think, um, that is all I had for treasurer.
Okay.
Here is Carrie.
We dragged our feet just long enough, yeah.
Oh, good, yes. She's right on, right on schedule.
Yeah, they, practice, they always.
I know. The coach came home with a smile on her face, so maybe the girls that have been to practice today.
Do you guys get to practice outside in a pouring rain too?
Most of the time, but today we got to be in the gym, which is almost just as much a pain. Okay, I think. I got a request from daddy's children's to do an event at the park gazebo.
Which they just did an event using the.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So it looks like.
August 4th. August 4th, 2023. Uh, it will, it looks like it's gonna be a concert in the park.
Natural Florida.
Charlie Glue.
Oh, yes, I've seen, yep.
There are apples and food. There you go. That's awesome.
So that's good. So, uh, they have their insurance and we have it and that's, so there shouldn't be any problem, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Second, yeah.
Yep, I'm good with that too. It's great.
So that seems like a good thing to do.
Yep. Could be a good community event. August 4th, that's a Friday.
Yeah, that's great.
Remember who did the, uh, who was doing the music in the parks? Is that Mark Cole? Just pretty much.
You'll let them, you can let them know that it's fine to do.
Yep, I will. Really, the only other thing just is, um, the nature center is opening in June. So they sent out a, an email about it, so that's good for them that they got that.
Last time I go by, it wasn't.
I know, it's been years.
Okay. Good.
So I think.
How are we doing on dog licensing and all that stuff? Things are still trickling in and?
Yep. About, I think I just did two fifty-four.
Okay.
And I'm waiting on the big one that has about thirty dogs or twenty-one, I think it is.
Okay.
He's been in and, and touch base on what, what he has and what's no longer there. So now he'll just come back and pick up the tags.
Okay.
That up on my end. That's the type of advice.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So hopefully, you know, he comes back, but yeah, so that's good.
Okay.
I just can't think of anything right now on the spot.
That's fine. We can come back to Carrie if, uh, again, assistant assessor, did Dorothy leave anything for us?
I haven't seen emails.
No, they, her and John did go out on the visits that they wanted to do, um, for the building permits and things.
Okay.
So I know they did that last week and she seemed like everything went fine and then that's the last we saw her, I guess.
Okay, okay. That's good. Fire and fast, anything that you know of, Aaron?
Uh, no.
Okay. Constable?
Fire school this weekend?
Uh, yeah, fire school this weekend, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I heard that a record number of people have signed up?
Uh, maybe.
Which is great because all the departments are advertising and getting worried about.
Yeah, well, what happened was they, everything shut down for COVID and then a lot of people didn't start back up again. So there was a lot of regional schools that just never got the motivation to get it all back up together. Because, you know, it's like doing anything here, it's a lot of time and, you know, so to get that all organized, so.
Okay. Okay, uh, constable, Mark?
Kids are driving four-wheelers around on Railroad Street and Little Italy Road.
Okay.
Tearing up private property, tearing up town property.
Okay.
End the town road.
Okay. So what are we gonna do to deal with that?
Have we contacted the sheriff's department by chance?
We have not.
I'm assuming this is recent, just.
I.
It's been ongoing for a while.
On, on the road has been recent, on Little Italy Road anyways. As of this week, I noticed them doing donuts and stuff. I have an idea who one of them is, but there's at least one other, uh, person doing it that's coming from a different area. That, so I'm trying to run into them, uh, to talk to them and hopefully that will be enough and.
That would be good if you, yeah, if it doesn't, then we need to get the sheriff's department or the state police here and try to catch them.
Right. Yeah. It doesn't need to be a big deal right now, but if it continues, then it needs to be a big deal.
They, you said they have, have they been on the railroad bed as well?
They, they did go down the railroad bed. Uh, they didn't tear that up, uh, but they went down below the stump dump and they're tearing it up down there and.
Okay.
I mean, it's not anything that any of us hasn't ever done.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Not being smart about it.
Okay. Well, they, hopefully you just need some talking to and we can get to. Well, I was being nice about it, Dan, but.
Probably can't do that.
Okay, anything else, uh, to report? Dog stuff? Where is our dog stuff?
Have you talked to anyone on that list?
On this list?
Yep.
Not yet. Um, I talked with, um, the people up at Proctor's. They're actually gonna be calling you tomorrow. Uh, they, they have twelve dogs.
That was weird.
So she wants to know how much money she needs to bring. I told her a check was best, um, but if, if it's cash, then, um, close to the, uh, proper amount is best. She has six puppies under six months, um, so those shouldn't be late, uh, but the other six obviously would be late. And then we're just.
Any other complaints on dogs, any?
Had one complaint a few weeks ago, uh, about dogs barking on Railroad Street.
Okay.
And I delivered that to them. I need to touch base with them again.
Okay.
But other than that, I received a call today, um, about the, the four-wheelers.
Okay.
And that was.
And you're gonna check in with Carrie once a week and just touch base? So, okay, good.
And I can update you and listen.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Okay, good. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Library, do we know anything on library? Have we heard anything?
I haven't heard anything. I know that you're ongoing, ongoing programs.
Okay.
So.
They're slow.
Yep.
Okay, zoning administrator?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, uh, get a handle on our, our tax map.
Okay.
As I said before. Uh, I looked at a piece of property today. I got a call on it about a person that wanted to buy two acres of land, middle individual. So I looked it up. The tax map shows twenty-five acres. The card that goes with it showed sixty-one. Then there was another one that had fifty-one acres. So I had three different numbers for the same piece of property. And the picture that was with it is from, I think they had it with the graphs. I mean, it's so old. Now, I know we've had reappraisals, but we need to get these things up to date. So when you look at it, you know what you're looking at.
What do we gotta do to do that, Dan? You're just.
I'm, I'm gonna get with Dorothy.
Yeah, it seems almost like Dorothy had mentioned that at one of these meetings that those, a lot of those pictures needed to be.
It's not just the pictures. I'm running into a lot of errors.
Yeah.
As in like it needs to be.
And how do the errors get surveyed?
This one, I can't tell you. This one, the man owns a lot of property. He owns four or five lots on this one road. And every one of them is screwed up.
Are they contiguous lots or are they separate?
Some are contiguous. There's one that's separated.
I wonder if that's part of the problem is between what he had a surveyor do for him and what he told the town.
That survey.
Okay.
Sounds like it may need to get surveyed.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean.
So, I mean, I've just got to get very, that's.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, how about health officer?
Health officer, I no longer do rental inspection as of July 1st, 2022.
And per the state of Vermont?
Per the state of Vermont, you have to, to have a fire marshal come. I have two complaints pending right now. I'm gonna be calling the main person, Fred Vermont Town Health Officers tomorrow because I can't get the fire warriors to call me back from the main office in Longberry. So as I said, I've got one complaint on garbage, um, where the next door neighbor is taking pictures of rats, dogs, opossums and cats digging in the garbage and there are bags. I don't even know how many bags of garbage there is. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
Same spot as your four-wheeler culprit.
Okay. My four-wheeler.
Well, that, that, yeah, I mean, the other part of that too is, is there, is there, from a waste perspective, is there public nuisance? Because that becomes.
Yeah, that, that's a complaint with the environmental.
That, that can go to the environmental board.
According, according to the law that Reverend Scott signed into effect, you have to go through the fire lashes first.
For it, no, but if, if you can visibly see the waste from the road and you have, that's probably a cause to contact the environmental court for a complaint.
Yeah, you just put a solid violation that there's an upper disposal, a solid waste.
Yeah.
You can't say it from the road.
If you look in, they have.
So who's complaining? So the neighbors complaining about it? Can we let the neighbor know that they can contact the.
Yeah, we, we can.
Environmental.
Well, I think at the same time, if, if we as a town are know, know of a potential solid waste violation, we should.
What do we gotta do to do that?
Report it to the court. I don't.
There's a form online, like report an environmental something. I, I should have done more. But it goes to our enforcement, or, or, yeah, enforcement and compliance division.
Okay.
And then they have investigators. The guy in our region is training. We, we lost our environmental enforcement officer like a year and a half ago.
He really had to do a whole new.
Yeah. Ours is based in Newport, so it's not the smartest.
I know.
So not the smartest geographical.
Well, we could, you said the complaints on Little, or Little Italy Road, right?
Railroad Street.
Railroad Street, sorry. It was one or two.
It's the same way we did with, uh, the salvage yard place, uh, the same type of violations we do with the cars. Same report.
Well, let's see if we can look into that and see what we can do. All right, uh, what else?
That's it.
Dan, okay, uh, maintenance follow-up on carbon monoxide detectors, replace Jim light grids. So we have a new carbon monox, monoxide detector, um, so can we get, uh, Ben? Can we contact Ben or somebody to come?
Still on a standstill and all that.
Okay.
The carbon monoxide detector is in.
Yeah, right, in the office.
It's in, but it's not in.
It's not in.
It's installed.
So if we could, yeah, get ahold of Ben and see if he could take care of those things or get some help.
It's still in the office this weekend. I'm trying to reach out to Ben, but I should be able to, I took the old one down. I should be able to do one now.
Okay.
It was determined that the old one was bad because we took the, replaced the battery in it, plugged it back in and it went off.
Okay.
And the guy said, oh, the battery is, the detector's bad. And I said, why don't you go over to the fire station and get a CO detector and then we'll determine if the battery is bad. And there wasn't an elevated CO in the gym, so it was a bad detector, so.
Okay.
What we ended up doing was there was another CO detector on the stage. So we took that one from the stage and brought it out into the more common space, so.
So this one will go on stage?
Probably, yeah. And then the other thing we want to look at is, uh, I'd have to, the electrical code is all of those, NFPA, which is electrical code. All those detectors have a ten-year lifespan on them and it seemed like that one was like, uh, two thousand fifteen or something.
Put your dates on?
Yeah, manufacturer date on them. So we might wanna look into.
General?
Yeah, it might be something that we end up having to do in a year or a half or so, is replace a lot of those, so. And the reason behind that is there's like a passive sniffer in there that stops sniffing wet after ten years. So.
Also, anybody's looked at the flashing light that was at the gym entrance? Something was happening. You weren't here at the last meeting. Somebody was talking about it. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's another thing that needs to be looked at.
Okay, so, uh, we need to get our, hold over our maintenance guy.
Yeah, the biggest thing is the gym, getting the, getting the metal grids over the gym.
Yes.
What we don't want is somebody that has a party and then a ball hits a light and maybe that glass showering down on people.
There used to be a gigantic huge step ladder up in that.
It is. It's.
There did. Where'd it go?
In above the tables, like way up.
Way, way up.
Way up. You'd need like ten people to get it down.
Ten?
Yeah, ten.
I don't, how many people?
Maybe eight.
Okay.
I don't know how it got up there.
I don't know either. Well, we were, we were looking for it.
He's in the way.
Yeah, yeah. That's just like, somebody says, it's right there on the stage because you can't put it anywhere else.
Terrible.
I don't know. I got it up there.
I think you need three people to get it.
Oh, naturally.
Naturally.
Okay, okay, good. Well.
We'll have to warn that meeting.
We'll have to see what we can do on that. IT, anything on IT?
Yeah.
All's good?
Um, I, we, we probably should touch base with, um, with Carrie on when we're looking at ordering the new computers that we put in the budget.
Okay.
So we, we probably should get those on order and start working on plugging away. I mean, we've got seven months left in the year, but still I'd rather not wait till the last minute to do that if we can, so.
Yep, good. Planning commission?
Don't have anything for like the planning commission side of things other than that we're happy you signed it.
Maybe you guys can take a little bit of a break for a little bit to.
That's good.
Yeah, they don't recall when that town plan entered, unless you do, Dan, if there was any energy subsection on that or. They just told me as they were leaving that we have in our climate room, maybe look into forming an energy.
We're gonna look into it, right.
There's a lot of comments in this survey about anti-solar panels, though. I mean.
There is, in fact, it takes twelve years to recoup the initial investment.
Well, and that, for, for that, that's for their program specifically, I would say. That's not necessarily the case for a lot of solar.
No, mine is twenty years.
Program. Well, yeah, yeah, for, well, for personal, for solar stuff, but, I mean, that's like the, the two ones that either end the town.
Fifteen.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, they, they recouped some of that already. I mean, they dropped prices. Those are both, I think those are both GMP. Uh, solar array is great. And, and, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Probably three, four years after they went in, my, my bill drops significantly, so I know that, I mean, it's.
That's because GMP bought CBS at the time. That's what's happened.
Oh, nevermind. Anyway.
Okay, staying on track here. NEK CUD or grant agreement review grant. So Mike, what's happening?
Aaron, you missed this last one. So the big picture is there's a USDA, uh, grant opportunity called a community connectivity grant program. Just got announced in mid-April. We kind of put our hands up, or I put my hands up with NEK as being potentially interested in this. And so, uh, NEK broadband, um, kind of looked at the maps and who's got, essentially it came down to who's got the most open unserved space. And it, uh, and it points to Groton of them. So this is, uh, probably gonna be around currently, the thought is around a million dollar, uh, grant opportunity. NEK broadband would be the. grant opportunity, NEK Broadband would be the applicant, they gave a fifteen percent matching on this, and it would connect most of the rest of unserved Groton. So, uh, everything west of Goodfellow Road, around US three oh two to Orange, I guess, is the next town. Up Vermont two thirty-two to Ricker, and then it would, the grant territory that we'd be applying for would go on the east side of Lake Groton, uh, because, because Kingdom Fiber has won an ARDOF auction a couple of years back to get money to connect the west side of Lake Groton. This would follow the, uh, the east side of Lake Groton and then go up towards, and cover and include New Discovery State Park. And this would be enough to, the, the money that we'd be seeking would be enough to cover that cost.
Yeah.
By going to the east side of Lake Groton, we're effectively gonna be running the poles on the west side, so that could open up and accelerate the west side of getting it as well. Contingent on this, and it's super competitive, they did this a couple of years ago, they're grading applications on economic impact, educational impact, healthcare impact and public safety, so how, how is this making those four dimensions much better? So, I'm having lots of conversations with state of Vermont, state parks, I've spoken with V-Trans, I'm talking with principal at BMU on Friday, I've heard from the K through six principal today, I'm, uh, calls into Cottage Hospital, into River, into Little Rivers as well, and there's like search and rescue for the state park people, there's probably another eight groups I'm, I'm trying to, to get their input on. Part of this grant commitment is to serve an unserved zone that I described with the requirement to have a quote-unquote community center or access point there. Ideally, that would be our library, but it's not in the unserved territory, so, um, this would be a place that would have, uh, minimum two computers, broadband access, a place for people to sit, it would be indoors. It could be extending an existing structure, or it could be a prefab trailer that comes in and would be here for at least a couple of years. And this would provide, um, seven day a week, not seven by twenty-four, but seven day a week access to computers and the internet for people that can't afford broadband, uh, don't currently have it, that type of thing. So, I've been looking at that, I've been talking with, uh, some of the property owners where maybe this could fit, um, Modern Woodman, uh, Upper Valley Grill, uh, Nathan Puffer in terms of the apartment area there, um, Martin Klein, um, up at the wedding bar. You know, I think, uh, I think, nobody's really said no yet, I think there's some definite openness.
It is.
Uh, I think the other two logical places or possible places would be either the town garage or the Puffer of Wallfield, here in Southern Way or Farm. I'm going to explore, I've, I've been told without a community center there that our application is not gonna be strong enough.
Yeah.
That's come from USDA, uh, but globe, sort of a macro statement to everybody, I, I would like to explore, I mean, the logical places to beef up our library, right, and to go that route. I'm gonna see if I can explore and, and, and explain our situation in a way where maybe we can get some more clarity around that, um, because I think that's an ideal world. I think, you know, the community center brings another set of burden to us in terms of managing and.
Yeah, as far as the town aspect of that, we don't, you know, we wouldn't wanna be responsible for the community center.
Yeah, we have liability question, I mean, I think part of me thinks that, you know, trying to find a volunteer network to look after it, possibly, it's not ideal, I mean, nothing's clean.
It just opens up liability to the town that, that we probably wouldn't want to, to be involved in.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be any more liability to the town than the library would be, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but the library is staffed and.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, but, I mean, that's where.
Community building.
My thought goes to, you know, is this something that, you know, obviously goes through the town, but, you know, we, we get the, the library trustees and the friends of the library involved, is this something where we're setting up a satellite library, you know, that, that includes not just, you know, the ability to access internet, but, you know, maybe there's a, a small give or take, you know, community library, you know.
A list of libraries.
Yeah, a list of.
Who would fund this once, you, obviously there's a grant to do it, but then, then how's it funded to?
After three years?
Well, so the grant takes care of running the hot, or the community.
The grant allocates ten percent of the grant amount or up to a hundred and fifty K for this community center.
Okay, and then, and then after three years?
After three years, you're gonna have to figure out, does this work continually?
Okay.
Is it adding back? And, you know, part of the application, or part of your case, I think that you ideally wanna make is, hey, this is just not a spot where people can connect to the internet. This is a spot where, you know, maybe there's, you know, adult education online or something like that going on, maybe there's somebody rolling in from an incubator to talk about, hey, how to start an online business, all right? There needs to be a little, there needs to be some level of programming on top of this.
Yeah, I guess I would be afraid it could get misused and all that, so.
There's no question, I mean, and to me, and to me, that's been the biggest sort of potential roadblock, I mean, I've already committed a chunk of time to this and I'm looking forward, the deadline's June twentieth, um, there's a lot of constituents this impacts. It, V-Trans is like walking through all the benefits that this will give them on Vermont two thirty-two in terms of cameras and access and not relying on, trying to rely on a cellular network, it's spotty at best, same up US three oh two, the state park system has reservation systems and tech up there, um, I haven't talked, I've only talked to a manager there, so I, I mean, but if we can't do a community center and if I explore and, and definitely have that shut down, all right, given our circumstances, then I think this is a, I wouldn't say a non-starter because it's already started, but it's, isn't worth it.
The other thing that comes to mind too, and trying to think from a different perspective or different angle on it, all the problem is, is it, does it make sense for us to put another structure in or do we approach the state? And, you know, the, the nature center is a, like, potentially hardened place that could be utilized for this type of, of, you know, process and, you know, is this stuff that we should be doing to help, help that and we do that in conjunction with the state force, you know, and, and that way, or is this stuff that we hand off to them and say, Bill, here's an opportunity, we've got the information together and these are all of the stating, I mean, it, it, what, what's interesting to me with what you're saying is, is it seems like there's a lot of benefits to the state agencies as much as there are to individual private citizen or residents of the town, why is the state not just doing this anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I even had the conversation with the reg, with the regional person, so I've got, you know.
But that's, if you were over there, you'd be way out of the lane, nobody from.
No, but, you're, you're talking. The point is, they have to run the infrastructure to get there and everybody that's along that infrastructure line gets the benefit of access. That's, that's the, that's the piece that's.
Just this point though, I mean, if you're thinking about a place for somebody who comes home from work and is like, all right, I got it, my kid needs their work done, okay? And it's the middle of winter and I don't wanna sit in a parking lot somewhere, having it down on three oh two is gonna be a lot easier than asking somebody to drive up to the neighbors.
Yeah, without doubt, um, you know, that's, but, you know, this thing is really.
But it could be, that could be our only potential option.
Don't keep it open, what you're, I don't know if the nature center is gonna be.
Right.
The parking lot's open, but the building itself.
Mike, what was the date of the deadline?
June twentieth.
Okay.
So, to where, so you're just, you're.
I wish I had more, there's still moving parts, they're trying to reach.
Well, just to keep us up, keep us up to date, let us.
When it's fixed, it's either gonna go away or it's gonna be like, okay.
So.
We need to make a decision, the town, the university, the town garage, the upside is possibly a million, number one is gonna be hard to get anyway.
Right.
So, there's that. Number one would be a million dollars and two hundred and fifty to three hundred homes getting broadcast.
Right, 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 right.
So, I mean, I guess, Mike, what I would ask, we, we should probably make a final decision on whether this is actually gonna be feasible or not by the next live board meeting, so that you're not, you know, that, that way you're not dedicating time to something that we get a grant in for June twentieth, we, we potentially get this funded and then it's not really, turns out to not really be that feasible, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, if it's obviously not feasible, let's figure that out.
Exactly, the sooner the better.
Well, the real problem here that I can see is the location of a community center.
Well, there's no question, I mean, maybe we can get an exception or maybe they're just saying one thing and thinking another, I don't know.
I mean, it looks to me like, you know, like you said, the idea of the grant is to, is focused kind of around the community center.
Well, they seem to, I, I think the mind, I'm, I'm trying to get in their heads, I'm trying to get in their head, I think what they envision is a community that basically has no access.
Yeah.
They don't, I mean, the problem with most Vermont towns, I'm thinking, is that libraries are gonna be in center towns, center towns is where the internet is, okay?
Which makes perfect sense.
So, they may be just thinking much smaller towns where there's nothing going on.
Right.
And they wanna make sure they have that spot that offers, I mean, our library doesn't offer seven days.
No, well, not, not indoor, actually, they have, their wifi's twenty-four seven, but, yeah, you're right, I mean, it's not.
There's no desk to sit at, there's no computer in the parking lot.
That's right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
So, they're trying to solve more than what we have right now, so.
Okay.
All right, let me see what I can find out in, in terms of figuring out an exception. I think, I'm gonna keep rolling and then next meeting, which I think.
Yeah, get us some good news and then we can.
You gotta get this one wrapped up, you've got an energy committee to be running.
Uh, what else, Mike, let's see.
That's, that's it. Oh, no, excuse me.
Yeah, we have.
Uh, we have an alternate route, uh, nominee, or, uh, Terrence Curran is interested in becoming the, uh, becoming, I think Zach currently is an alternate.
Yeah, I, I threw my hat in the rain just as a stopgap till we found, if we found somebody, so we had that alternate, but I, I think it's a great opportunity to get somebody else involved in the town's operations.
And he's turned to the really, really strong technical background.
Do you want me to send him a letter?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was on the email list as an alternate in front of like two years.
You're dropping.
Not really, no, but.
Okay.
I'll send a letter.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if we could spin that quickly, because there's a board meeting next week as well.
Uh, yeah.
I'll send it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Get it out, we'll, at least we'll have it in the mail tomorrow.
Okay. Let's get it done.
I could even get it to Sarah.
Now, if you could find a community building like that, I mean. Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Revue grant agreement.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the, yeah.
I got the disagreement, been through everything now with the state, and it's basically ready for you guys to say, we want it, and then we tell the state, yes, and then we sign it and we're gonna have a big project starting.
Okay, done. We all said, says, we want it.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit.
It's gonna get more. We have one here too.
That's what this one is.
Well, I wanted to go like, you know, are there any comments, questions, you know?
There's a lot.
I have.
There's a lot to read in there and I'm pretty sure none of us sat down and read.
I figured that much, I gave you what, two days, I think I got it Friday.
Yeah, I saw the email on.
Yeah, I looked through it. I mean, really the important stuff is the, there's a couple of things, the, the, the biggest like thing in here is that we're acquiring property, right? So, for like a, from like a legal town perspective, that's like the big thing that's going on, that is like a, you know, discussion point. The other things are maintaining the rail bed, planning something around that property we're acquiring and the adjacent stump dump, signage, wave finding, uh, what am I missing?
Coming up with an overall master plan.
That's for the stump dump and the Green Mountain Tower property that just incorporates somehow connecting the building center with.
This basically just says that, you know, we're, we're agreeing to have a plan to handle that, it's not.
There's some, uh, you know, there's a, a bit of work, like, uh, the Green Mountain Tower properties and they want in the deed that it's gonna be an open and public property for, you know, as long as the town owns it, and if that changes, then we have to let them know. We'd maintain signs so if sign gets knocked down, you know?
Okay.
Things like that, I mean, it's, it's, it's like five years of maintaining things or something.
Yep, yep.
There's other things that it's tough to state about, so like, like progress on our project, where we installed signs, how many signs, if there's more.
Who is gonna be in charge of that stuff? We're having a hard time getting the cages put on, the, the lights in the gym.
Yeah, we've, you know, Mike, myself and Gavin.
So, I guess that would be some discussion, like, who is gonna be in charge of it?
And also Greg Western.
Greg Western.
Well, and I think too, like, you know, we do have a, we do have a highway crew that in the summertime may be able to do some sign placements and may, may be able to help with.
Well, we have twenty thousand dollars, I'm sure that pays for someone to hammer.
Well, I'm just saying, it's good to have, it's good to have a plan, like, okay, so who is gonna?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sixteen dollars and.
I mean, I, I think that the project's got different parts to it, right? I mean, you've got a trailhead being built, a parking area being built, top of the stump dump, you've got a whole section of the rail bed being basically created, so there's big parts.
Yep.
Uh, one part that will be under the planning commission would be the master planning process for the park, it's just gonna be either a park, something we do together or, and maybe have those meetings like a half hour before or something.
Yep.
Uh, or something we do as part of our meetings and that's, we're gathering community information about what to do with property over there, so, like, people, what, what are people interested in?
Right, right.
Hiking trailers, on a ride of bike, or?
So, um, yeah, I mean, I, I think from an agreement standpoint, the, did Gavin look at this yet, did we know if this got together?
No, Gavin, Gavin, like, we, we talked to you before the agreement about how to acquire the property, what, what type of deed we're gonna get, uh, the type of work that's gonna be needed to get that deed. That's the section, if someone, if someone's gonna look at it, it's the acquired property section.
But that, I mean, this is just an agreement that we're gonna be moving forward, that this isn't the actual purchase of the property.
No, but I mean, in here it does explain how we're going to acquire the property, but we told, they came back and said, you know, with the type of deed they wanted and the type of insurance they wanted us to get, and like, I was, like, we were getting a quick deed with water rights, so we might have, we talked about water rights earlier, we might be getting water rights for the dam down there or something. I agree about how they made that a point of when they're, when I was talking, they're like, we're gonna release the water rights to the town.
Okay.
Great, so we put in hydro dam.
Yeah, or, I don't know what.
No, you can.
I still take it, we don't wanna do that.
Not Vermont. Not Vermont, state won't let it.
So, they, they indicated their new quick deed, but Gavin, Gavin said was fine, you know, but the state wanted us to have warranty deed with title insurance, and I said, well, we're gonna quick deed, that's that, and they said, okay, we'll put it in there as a quick deed, so that's in there, uh, like, to me, nothing jumped out, like, like, whoa, controversial, whoa, what is this, like, uh, there were a couple of things, because like initially they had that public access to also tied to the stump dump, um, and they kind of, the way that the language was written was that the stump dump was gonna be a recreational property, and so I had to explain to them all the different purposes of our stump dump, Um, and like kind of the way that the language was written was that the stump dump was gonna be a recreational property and so I had to explain to them all the different purposes of our stump dump, that it's not a recreational property, that town uses it for fire perimeter trade, helicopter landing, for gravel, for whatever else, you know, that were there, that's- But they understood that, they took that off and they just left that bit on the Green Mountain Tower property, so the two acres are two point. That's another one. The card says-
Yeah.
Something. It's 2.2 acres over there with a right-of-way going through it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I think you, what, what you've got here for an agreement looks good. I think we move forward with it. You know, now, with this, kind of leads us to the next steps, right, which are, you know, what is, what is the total project plan? Um, what is, you know, where kind of, what are the next steps? And then, again, just knowing from the other stuff that we're doing for the drainage project is, you know, what is the state of Vermont expecting from a reporting around this? And then, you know, funding, et cetera.
It's in here. It's pretty basic. We, we talked, you know, we negotiated that kind of end of what we're going to do, track counts and things like that.
Yep.
Pictures, basic things, not like we're writing a report for it. We have that content master plan for the property on the other side of the river, but that's, that's being done by, that would be done by consultants, so.
So, that's kind of the next, you know, looking at the next steps, going from like the, this phase, right, getting through the agreement of, this is what we're spending this money on, to how are we going to actually spend this money?
Right.
Which is-
This is a big dollar out today. Big projects, a hundred, twenty, three thousand dollars for regrading the rail bed, it's a big project.
Well, that's, and I, and I start to think, you know, logistically around, you know, we're looking at, you know, we, we, we're gonna talk a little bit about kind of the update around the bid process for the drainage project. That's gonna probably be next year. You know, this, where we, where we are now, being that it's May, we're gonna be putting, a lot of this is gonna end up being stuff that we're probably gonna have to get together for bid late fall, early, early winter, if we're gonna do any of that stuff next year. Um, so, wanting to make sure that we're kind of coordinating how we do those, because there is the potential, right? This is just me thinking, there is the potential that the company that gets the bid for the, the town property could get the bid, bid for putting the, you know, putting in the parking area or regrading the railroad bed, 'cause, you know, that, but making sure that we're doing that kind of in tandem so that we know what's kinda happening. 'Cause they may want, you know, they may wanna take on more than one bid, 'cause they're gonna be able to leave their equipment here and not have to move it and-
Most of these would save us, too. Uh, I think we looked at it, like, we're gonna split the parking area out first, because to us, that was a small project that can easily do bid out, show progress on the project like immediately.
Yep.
Uh, and so that was gonna be something that was gonna, we're hoping this year, 'cause that'd be a great time in place for the winter, a great place, say we have it in place for the fall, you know? It's more parking for, for people out here recreating, uh, and hopefully visiting.
Yeah, no, for sure. I, I just know that, well, we, we talked about it with other bids is, now's a very hard time to try to get a bid in for these companies, because they're already booked for the summer. You know, we will be lucky, you know, feasibility-wise, we will be lucky if they break around to do that type of project in October. You know, 'cause they, they booked up, they, they wanna, they wanna fill their calendar and keep, keep projects on their calendar.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. It would definitely be fall.
Oh, yeah. Or next year.
Or next year, next year is probably-
So, do you need, what do you need from us? Do we need a motion on that, or do you, what's?
The next step, they, the, uh, the, you know, the state said, you know, you need to, they, we, they asked if I could be the person executing, let's see, I thought that would be fine, right? We talked about that. We talked about it at the meeting. Uh, then they wanted to just have your buy-in, that the agreement looks good. They wanted to make sure that, we reviewed it so many times that I've gone back and forth and this is where we wound up. So, this is three, four months in the making here.
I'd say, I mean, I don't think we need a motion. I think we just approve it.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I would say this luck board is in agreement with-
Yep.
Thank you for all the hard work you've done on that.
It's nice to get to this point.
Like, where is grant agreement part one?
I don't know. I think it's a generic, like, thing.
All right.
I will look through my emails. I, I knew someone-
When I looked at it, I figured it was like the second draft of the grant agreement, like, I know it's a part one. Part two.
You know, I, I thought, oh, it says grant award detail, part one. It's a form. Uh, I remember this. Lisa, you saw this form.
Oh, yeah.
It asks for like a couple of things about the town. It's, it's just a two-page form. Uh, I, I forget what it asks. Maybe I forgot about the number, things like that.
Oh, we did that.
Yeah, whatever that form we said, yeah, that's what that is. I, I thought that, um, when I went to this after a print it out, I was like, I don't know what part one is. Someone's bad.
Okay.
All right, excited.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
To the Gilson.
They're gonna send me a document, like an internet one, and I'll send you the executed, hopefully. For everyone?
Boston.
Infrastructure project update. What do we got?
We had an update call last Thursday morning.
But it, things didn't-
Uh, that was Friday. Thursday you had your follow-up.
Yeah, we had our-
We had a, we had a web, yeah. The biggest thing was finding out about the archaeological, um, assessment stuff. Um, Sean, was it Nate sent an email that I didn't, or forwarded? I don't, couldn't find where, what he was, the information was forwarding. Um, but anyway, so the Thursday meeting went well. It was a good check-in. There's, as there has been, there's a list of things to get done and get through and, um, so there's some follow-ups that we're still working on with easements and some of those documentations. But no matter what, it's based off the archaeological review assessment.
They came on Friday. Nate sent the contact person to the UVM, for the UVM group and they were supposed to meet Friday. Nate changed his spam on his computer, so he didn't get the follow-up email to meet them at 11:30 in the Groton. So, Nate never came, 'cause he thought he never heard back. The archaeologist emailed us all and said, you know, "Meet me at 11:30," but then he never did. So, then Nate said, "Sorry, I missed it," and he said, "Uh, if we could just talk about some sensitive areas to avoid, um, we can continue." So, it's, and he's working, the guy from UVM was working on it, so it all was moving. It wasn't a stopper, but it was just too bad.
It wasn't like they found something in the strays and then just requiring on stuff.
He said two sensitive areas to avoid and he wanted to talk to Nate to show him.
Perfect.
But they think they can do it over the phone.
So, um, the other thing that was part of the conversation from Thursday was the bid process. We discussed that pretty, pretty at length and got, got, uh, some good details on that. Um, basically, we're gonna be able to put it to bid when we wanna put it to bid.
Okay.
Um, you know, obviously, if we're, as long as we're discussing the plan and timeline with Sean and USDA, there's no issues there. So, um, based off that conversation, where we are at this point, we're probably going to put that out to bid for, um, for hopefully getting this project done next year.
Right.
So, that's the-
Maybe January, put the bid out.
That's right.
Fine, perfect.
Which is what we talked about, trying to do, so.
Our best, we'll get our best bang for our-
So, we had a title searcher in the office on April 26th, so the day before, so, so things are moving.
Okay, good. Good, good, good.
So, we're, it's, it's, I mean, it's just, it's one of those things that's kind of simmering away.
Right, but no, it's, that's good, that's good.
So, we're not-
So, but sure.
That's it. We're not any, we're not any risk of not being in compliance with USDA or anything like that. Sean's been really good about keeping in touch with everybody and Nate's been doing a fantastic job, too, so, just keeping it, kind of plugging away right now.
Good.
Great.
All right, excellent.
Yep.
Um, open to public and other business. Touche. Are you here for-
Same, no, same thing, the, that snowmobile drilling stuff, they tore it up so much, the rerouting water.
Okay.
And that water's gonna influence the abandoned property and maybe even further.
Okay.
So, you know, you should look into it, you know? These people are running ragged and it's gonna cost the town a lot of money for the dump.
Well, we gotta catch them, so we're working on the process of-
I get it, but no, I gave, I talked to Mark today. You were stuck, you had it. Stuck right in the middle of the frigging trail, you had it. Mark was busy, hey, it happens. You know, it's hard to catch somebody, you know, you don't get there.
Well, and I think the thing, too, is, I mean, it's like anything, if there's, if there's an issue with, you know, it being a public nuisance with people running up and down the road on four-wheelers, it could cause a public safety issue or a traffic safety issue. I would encourage anybody to call the state police or the sheriff's department and have somebody respond down here to, to deal with it immediately. Um, there's no saying that there, anybody's gonna be here in 10 minutes, but, you know, so.
You know, we're dealing with two years. I'm calling the state police dozen times. And if you see the state trooper, you be lucky.
Yeah, but we can't do any more.
I get it. But, you know, sooner or later, this is gonna take a bad shot, somebody's gonna get hurt, you're gonna clip a four-wheeler.
Well, I mean, yeah.
My wife only would drive out of the yard. They, they leave their house right on rocket mode and you look one way, they ain't there, next thing they pass you before you step on the gas.
We're dealing with Baker who almost got hit by a car pouring out of railroad street that came from that same address and it's on video.
Yeah, and, and I think I actually, when I talked to the sheriff about the speed sign, I talked to him about, you know, just, we, we talked-
Patroling that, going down.
Patroling that area, they, we talked about that when we set the contract up.
You can't get them to go, they don't go anywhere.
Yeah, they kind of just-
They sit in the parking lot out here, which I talked to them about moving around in town and stuff.
We got a report on-
We haven't seen him since we had his speed sign, like, very often.
The one they put in backwards?
Well, there's a rea-, supposedly there's a reason why they did that. It didn't, doesn't make, it didn't make any sense.
By the time you visit the yard in two towns.
Yeah, so, uh, when you're coming down the block, you're out there.
We change it around.
Have we seen anything for speeding tickets from the sheriff's department? Well, we've been getting them regular.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's always with the bill, the next page. I can't remember. There's not a heck of a lot, three or four.
I'll try to catch up with the sheriff's department when they're, they send the de-, you need to talk to the deputies when they're down here and versus to see if they-
Call him, James, he's always got something going on for sheriff.
So, I'll try to catch up with them. Two years be a good time to talk to him. He'll be running for reelection.
So, another thing for open is we ordered, um, 12 new American flags, 'cause the ones that we have are so faded. Yeah, to hang off the flag.
Okay, good.
So, that's in the bills. Carrie's working with Diane, um, on the flower pots, you know?
Oh, good, okay, good.
So, that's gonna happen.
Should send the bill to you.
That's how we're supposed to get a, we're gonna get a letter, right?
That's something different.
That's a different thing. Though I'm saying we should send a little bill for flowers.
Oh, cool. Okay. Who's that?
Chimney Savers have come in May 11th, you know, to work on the chimney.
Yes.
And I scheduled Myers to pick up, um, next week for May 9th, 'cause that seems always, for the, all the green up.
Okay.
It's always a huge problem.
One other thing, I'm thinking of it. Uh, did anybody talk to Cor-, uh, Tim Corey about adjusting the, um-
I emailed him.
Okay.
I never heard anything.
Never heard anything?
No, I follow him.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I mean, it doesn't get any-
I did, I did it that night or that next day.
I was just curious, I mean, it-
Yeah, do get in touch with them, have them look at the label.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That would be a, a Tim Corey job, too.
And then I was thinking something was in the furnace. Remember? When somebody came, they said something was wrong.
Electric something?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thought that was a couple years ago.
No. All right, well, okay, I, I don't call. I'll email him or whatever, okay.
Wes Garrett was the last person to work on some of that.
Yeah, Wes Garrett, it said that electrical needed to be done.
Oh, right, oh. Yeah, what was that? Furnace or something, wasn't it? Something was needed to be redone or-
In front of the furnace, wasn't going the right way or something.
I don't know, I'll walk in here and take a look.
If we walked in there, maybe I can show you what he pointed at, but I don't know much anymore.
Okay.
It was like this fall. It was after Garrett did something, then Tim came.
I remember that. I just don't remember what it was.
Anything after that?
I can't even remember what it was yesterday.
I feel like it got taken care of, but I could be totally-
I don't think it did, but.
Okay.
This letter for the, we didn't talk about that yet.
Yeah.
Um, so, oh, other than, there's this, other than this last bit here, if you come up.
Okay, just fix it. I don't know, I was just guessing.
No, it says, it just, it was, um, just a typo. Um, I mean, I think this looks good. I think, um, maybe it should, it would be good to have something that just says, you know, "If you are interested, please contact me, you, Carrie," to say that you're interested in participating in a committee meeting. And then, once we kind of get that back, what I can do is reach out directly to those people and we can set up a meeting to, to, you know, we can actually schedule a meeting to talk about kind of what are, what the purpose of the committee would be and then, you know.
Be nice, yeah, to get this, get the ball rolling on it. Make like a, a June, beginning of June first meeting would be good.
Yeah.
I thought it was good to point out there won't be a lot of meetings, you know, people don't like that, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, yeah, no more of them.
And then there was a list of people that were thinking, Mary and I were talking, so.
No, I mean, I think this looks great. Um, maybe Buck, you don't have Buckaroos on here, Dave?
No.
I, you know, I would add some of the other local groups, Buckaroos 302 would be good.
Sure.
That kind of thing.
Looks good, though.
Yep, no, I think it looks good. I just said that there was one thing there that I-
And I already forgot about my, um, so I, I did check into, remember a violation notice for-
Yes.
For the thing. I called the state about that and now I can't remember who called me right back, Paul or some- Somebody called me right back and said that they, they had been dealt with and they were right on top of it and he was working with, um, the town of Rygate and with Gene and, not a big deal. Um, they just gotta do some different things with storage and light bulbs and stuff like that.
Labeling them.
Labeling, yes, labeling, they're, they, so he was very happy and very, whatever, he just needed to-
So, we don't need to do anything, no? Okay, good.
So, it's all being worked on?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just interesting, we got a lot of, it's really-
Well, there was an email, there was, there was more that we were missing, I think, to this whole thing.
I had talked to a couple people in Rygate and it's been kind of a-
Yeah, so, um-
But we're like co-owners of it.
Yeah, co-owners, sorry, it's one. So, we're just kind of getting notified that whatever, but the actual people involved are taking care of it and working on it.
Cool.
That's a deficiencies at the transfer station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, is that it for all that?
I think Lisa alluded, um, we would be remiss, Carrie said last meeting, that green up day is Saturday. So, you can get your bags at either the town office or Upper Valley Grill.
The library.
And the lower of the library. Uh, you fill your bags and then put them over by the dumpster.
You don't just leave them aside in the road and?
No, unless you wanna pick them up, Gary.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
Yeah, no.
Well, after you get your turkeys, Dan, you just, then you go pick up trucks. Well, you can do it on Sunday, too, I mean.
Okay, so, so I guess we just have the couple policies that we need to review. Which ones did you, which ones?
I did debt management and reserve funds.
Okay.
I did not get to the others, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is a week.
Yep, that's good.
So, this is, um, the Groton one, this is the VLCT and this is what we had.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And Mike.
Yeah, the mic left.
So, this one, I think, what we had, yeah, so that was not needed. Carrie and I reviewed it and we wrote omitted things that is not how these are funds-
It's not easy now.
Were portrayed like. Debt management, so that is our, our new one. This is VLCT and then this is-
The existing one. Thank you.
Oh, that's pretty easy.
Yeah, I thought it was-
It's pretty straightforward for you, it's, most of them, I think, oh, it's good. The top one's the new one.
And Aaron looked at the, I left the policies for Aaron to look at and he looked at them last week.
Yeah.
When you boys were on vacation. He reviewed.
I kept him a little dry, waiting for baseball practice.
Good idea.
So, yeah, yeah, nothing, nothing.
No, nothing hurts rather than this.
Yeah, just one of those things you gotta do every once in a while, make sure that-
Looks good to me.
Everything's one of those CYAs.
That's right.
So, next week I'll work on the bounds budget one and I can't remember the purchasing policy. Purchasing policy, okay, yep.
That's the one we're gonna probably want to have some discussion around.
Yeah, and there's a few that will be combined, because we have so many.
So, I mean, especially like-
Miss Coffee here.
The one that says town of Groton on the top.
Yeah.
Uh, something heavy like the purchasing policy.
If we, if I could have it before the board meeting to look at, you know, maybe have some more than I, the one page that you can kind of breeze over sort of that.
So, do you want me to email it to you?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah, that should be fine.
All right, you don't find that one short, it's good.
And then there was an HR, um, or UVM, I don't know if any business did, just thought I'd put it out there.
Did I see the golfing one?
Yeah, Zach would sign up for that.
The golfing one?
Oh, there is a golfing one for...
I didn't see a golfing one.
I remember.
Yeah, was it town officials, or was it cyclo...? What is it, just a meet and greet golfing?
Yeah, I mean, if a slug board member can go, I'm not gonna go golfing with him.
But it is zoning in here, actually.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna not take that day off work, calling it sick that day.
I'll email it, I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's, there's one PO in there for the cemetery. I put your name on here, and then realized, you know, you're on cemetery, but I don't know really where to pay that additional amount.
So I looked at that too, it was for doing the maintenance, cutting trees and whatever the bill for having, who was it?
It's Chris Bruce.
Doing maintenance, where are, who is, like, which fund is paying for that?
That's not my commander.
No, I, yeah, I don't know.
I know, I know.
I don't know, is it town?
Yeah.
Is it town, or is it the...
I did come, it was on the contract, but it's really not cemetery money.
So it just comes out of the cemetery fund?
I think so, yeah.
Cemetery contract.
Yeah, it would come out, I thought that was part of the contract.
Yeah, that's what I did.
But is it, it's part of the cemetery, you mean, it's contract, right?
No, no, it's additional, it was budgeted.
Yeah.
So I really didn't know what to do with any of this check, so...
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know...
So it comes out of the general cemetery fund funding?
Yeah, I would pay it out of that budget line, and if the cemetery commission, yeah, and if they...
I'll let them know.
Yeah.
Because I don't have to call anything.
Yeah, probably not.
They may not.
And I didn't know if you knew.
Yeah, I would, I think you're right. I mean, that's, that's the budget line it should come out of, unless you can take it from a repair or some other something, which, yeah.
So it'll come out of, cemetery's a bowling?
No, I put it out of contracted work, cemetery contracted work.
Which it would be, I guess, that's what it would come out of.
It's a specific thing. It's not their own.
I thought some of that was in the bowling contract.
No, it's like, it's picking up brush at like the beginning of the year and things like that. That's what they're responsible for, but...
Not trimming the trees back.
Not trimming the trees back. So, I mean, it's like, I was at the cemetery commission meeting last week. The problem with the cemetery is just like hay field. The trees just come right in. And if you don't do anything for five years, you'll lose ten feet all the way up until...
I think we should make sure that we're budgeting for that next year, that we should have that as part of the... We should be on top of that, because if that's part of the property, and honestly, maybe what we need to do is change the bowling line, you know, cemetery property maintenance, because or, and or have a separate line for property maintenance, every budget for that. So, I mean, how much is it that they're, that he's asking for?
Well, it was six hundred and thirty this time.
Six hundred and thirty dollars?
But I don't know if he's gonna turn it down.
I guess we need to have a talk with the cemetery commission, somebody didn't...
I'll email him and ask him. Maybe I missed it, I...
Maybe I could just add a thousand dollars to budget next year.
That's, yeah, that's property maintenance stuff.
Okay. So, agenda and stuff for our next meeting, we need, so we need to add bids, highway bids.
Skating bids for highways.
We needed, we're gonna put on there, talking more about anything to do with the committee or for...
Energy committee.
Energy stuff, thing.
We can put that on our to-do's list, I don't, on our follow-ups list. I think, you know, it's one of those things that we need to...
I mean, it seems like Dan wants to be part of it.
So I'm just throwing it out there, I don't care, it's fine.
No, I think, like Zach said, I think we might wanna have it, or maybe have it under planning.
Yeah, put it, put it with planning.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's good.
I think we've pretty much told Mike, but I think that's what Mike needs to work on.
I mean, the slug board kind of passed that off on planning.
That's a good, that's a good, yeah, that's a good plan. Anything else we need for agenda next?
Something might come up.
Nope. Nope.
Okay, so we already signed orders, so we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
On favor?
All right.